Good evening. Welcome to this special public hearing for the Hartford City Council. This evening, we have five items. Five items on the agenda. The first three are resolutions with respect to the proposed Downtown North baseball stadium proposal. Fourth item is regarding a lease agreement with Headliners Barber Shop on Albany Avenue. And the fifth item is a lease agreement regarding Linda Nell Salon. And so, we will take the first three resolutions relating to Downtown North together. I have a sign up sheets and I'll call individuals up, those in favor and those in opposition to that. I'm going to read some of the highlights of our rules. Public hearing shall be conducted in accordance with the following procedures. Each person wishing to address the council shall upon recognition by the presiding officer give his or her name, address, and if he or she represents a group, shall in addition state for the record the name and address of said group. All remarks shall be limited to the proposed City of Hartford resolutions before us. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not any member thereof. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith barred by the presiding officer from further attendance. And I'll skip the rest for now. Each member will have three minutes to speak. We have a clock over to my right and please try to honor that. We'd like to get through everyone this evening. And there is an overflow room with viewing on the first floor atrium of City Hall here. So, anyone who's not in the room is welcome to go to the first floor. Our first speaker this evening will be Mayor Pedro Segarra. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Council President and thank you, members of the Hartford City Council. This is a very important discussion that we're having, so I'm glad to see that there are so many people here and beyond here. And everyone should be here. This is very important for our city. I'll keep my comments to three minutes or less, but what I need to say, everyone here needs to hear. You have heard about this project since June of this year. We have collaborated with many in the community to get to where we are today. The project has evolved and it has evolved for the better. We have heard from stakeholders and consultants and of course, from the most important people we need to hear from, our residents. We have before us the opportunity to create a new neighborhood out of land that has been blighted for decades. And according to the experts, it will have a new positive impact with the creation of over 2,000 construction jobs through 2018 and 1,000 permanent jobs. We have a proven team of developers who are anxious and willing to invest $350 million in the City of Hartford. They are doing this not out of the goodness of their heart, but because they believe it's a smart thing to invest in Hartford. And they, and only they, are assuming the bulk of the risk. We need to move this project forward because if we as a city are going to move forward, we need to do this. I have personally pledged to the Redevelopment Agency and to Serta, the need to collaborate. Now, we have to ask ourselves, are we going to be the city that can, that cannot get a $350 million development deal together? If we don't allow this to happen, picture us a year from now, wondering what went wrong. If we can't work this out, why would any other private investor come to Hartford? What does this say about realizing our commitment to realizing the goals of growth, jobs, and vibrancy? Downtown North will reconnect two neighborhoods divided by an unproductive sea of parking lots. This development will create jobs, add additional revenues, supply customers for our existing businesses, and create new ones. It would add more vibrancy. It will continue the momentum that we are in our city. And I'm looking forward not only to the progress that will come of this particular development, but of the development that can potentially occur within the 90 acres surrounding that area that is citing for development. As I have indicated at the last meeting, we will always talk about Hartford potential. What we need to do is move towards realizing that potential and our time has come. I will never ask you to support a bad deal for our city and I have supported your efforts to undertake the due diligence to vet this proposal. But I don't think any of us want to live in a city where we cannot get a deal done that is good for our residents. I am asking the council and the great people of Hartford to allow progress to happen. It is time. Thank you and I look forward to working with council on this great project and making it even better. I am looking forward to the additional opportunities in the surrounding areas that will be impacted and benefit by this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next.
Is it one of the mayor?
No. No. No, at the last public hearing, there are a lot of people that signed up who actually never spoke and I understand why. Because it took a long time to hear from the public. And so, I'm going to place a priority on trying to listen to and get to as many people that have signed up so they don't have to leave before they can speak.
I understand that. Thank you. I thought maybe the mayor could take a question or two also, no?
No, I'm sure the mayor will be happy to meet with you.
Now, I mean now, no?
Okay. Thank you. Next, speaking in opposition is Neil Berry.
Hello, council. I'm Mr. Neil Berry, represent the Omar Sri Thornton Foundation, organization that fights against institutional and structural racism. I must say, I'm not surprised to hear the mayor say that these important decisions, the most important decisions really don't matter with the residents of the people of Hartford. A little bit consistent. It seems to be shams, it seems to be scams. For one thing, the majority of these people here for this proposal, they don't live here. I talked to them personally. One of the gentlemen told me that the jobs that they're offering, the people of Hartford, are get your hot dogs, get your peanuts, those type of jobs. And the unions are here, of course, for the construction job. My question here is, who is this for? Why is it when corporations invest in Hartford, it has to be appealing and friendly to the races that don't live here, but refuse to invest in something appealing and friendly to the races that already live here? Have anything to do with why last year, Mr. Perry tried to take over my grandson's school and turn it into a magnet school in which 75% would no longer come from the City of Hartford? Anything to do with gentification, which affordable housing at Sands would have been turned into market rent? You say it's for our people. Why all the city-state federal grants in operation right now have to do with locking our people up? You already said, the mayor did, on Reverend Brown's show, I was there and I asked him the questions, why the jobs that are coming to Hartford, our people aren't qualified for. Panorama bread, the mayor cut the ribbon on that. They hire black people and they fire them just as quickly. And every time I go there, I see Caucasian management. Infinity Hall just opened. My question is, I wonder how many black artists are being booked there? The convention center, every time I go by the convention center, I never see a shuttle full of black people or Hispanic people. I see a lot of events happening downtown Hartford, bringing in dollars. And I see one black-owned business in downtown Hartford. I see no Puerto Rican businesses at all in downtown Hartford. I see them flipping burgers at Burger King. I see black folks cleaning up city streets that other folks come in and mess up during their events. And I see them emptying the garbage at the end of the day for insurance companies and law firms. You propose a grocery store, will they take EBT and debit cards and food stamps? You propose a restaurant and brewery, will it be a black-owned restaurant or a Hispanic-owned restaurant? As far as the brewery is concerned, we already have a number of clubs in Hartford and too many people that don't live here throwing up every weekend in our streets. New housing, 1,500 to 600 units, will it be affordable housing? Will the new Bank of America building be full of black people and Hispanic people? Retail, I'm sure it will be just like a Newbury Street in Boston, fit for Harvard students and MIT students who can afford it. Office space, we don't need office space because we don't have the jobs. Unless those people taking that office space are going to hire us, we don't need it. And until you give us the education so we can use that office space, we don't want it. Parking, we have lots of parking in the City of Hartford. We don't need parking. So, that's just to tell you that the parking you're proposing is not for us. Then there's the ballpark itself, $60 million. Where's that coming from? Because we're already $44 million in debt. We don't have no money for our folks, but we got $60 million for everybody else. And the corporate investors who want to put up over $300 million won't bail us out of the $44 million to help the people that already live here. So, you still play with, the people in park streets are still playing with baby rats and it would take more than 20 years for this city to regain this $60 million investment that it's offering for this ballpark.
Thank you. Next, speaking in favor is Mike McGary.
My name is Mike McGary. I live at 31 Woodland Street, Hartford, Connecticut. And thank you very much for this opportunity to come with a little different angle than most have talked about. Last time I talked to you, we stressed the idea for Grand List to take care of many of that gentleman's problems. If we don't have the money, we can't do anything and Grand List is where the money comes from. And also, the opportunity for kids to enjoy baseball. But tonight, I have a little different tack. You know, we've talked about this project, but one point that's been missed and should be emphasized, and I'm going to do that tonight, is a baseball facility of this size is going to give us the opportunity for a lot of events that we don't have. For every ethnic group, for every level of income, we need a facility like this. We don't really have one. For example, if you go to the recent Infinity Hall listing, you'll see that they put B.B. King in the Warner. But why did they put B.B. King in the Warner? Wouldn't he come here? No, Infinity Hall is too small. So, they went to the Warner, which is the right size. Well, B.B. King here would be great, but he's too, really, too small an act for the Meadows. And who wants to go indoors anyway in the summertime? So, wouldn't a B.B. King show be absolutely great for this facility this size? And let's also talk about boxing matches. Well, I'd love to see a good boxing match. Again, we don't have a facility for a boxing match in the city. They're either too big or too small. This field would be perfect for a boxing match. Also, the symphony. The symphony outdoors would be great, but the problem with the Bushnell is not only weather, but the size of it and the cost of going to the Bushnell. Boy, to have the symphony in the stadium would be just right and cost-effective. Let's also talk about outdoor hockey games. Boy, that works in a lot of cities. What a perfect fit for an outdoor hockey game. Now, remember when they wanted to do it out at Rent? It was too cold, that huge facility. Well, this facility could happen in the winter, it'd be great, an outdoor hockey game. Either UConn or maybe NHL would come here for a little practice game in the middle of the winter. Fantasy baseball camps would work, that'd be great. These things fit this facility and fit it just right. Now, these events are for all our citizens to enjoy. The revenue would circulate through the city and there'd be a lot of extra employment for such a thing. So, I'd like the council to consider the whole picture and the picture of a new facility that'd give everybody a chance at a very modest price and bring in the kind of things we'd like to see in town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, speaking in opposition is Patrice Nelson.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon, Mr. Woody. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak again today. I'm always here. The reason I'm speaking today, to bring what I feel within the community. I've been, I ran on the seven districts up in Hartford and I kind of know what the residents, even though the residents are not here, I kind of know what the residents are asking for in the community, like a grocery store or something. But like I said, I've been here so long in Hartford, not to share my age, but to be honest with you, I have not seen any development in Connecticut besides the civic center and so on and so on. I'm speaking on Albany Avenue, I'm speaking about Main Street. I see, I'm not against development, don't get me wrong, I'm not. I am against what's being opposed with the money for the stadium. If it was like, I just heard the man said, if it was trans over to soccer, baseball, football, or something like that, I don't have a problem with that. So, I'm just here to let you know, even though you don't see the residents all pile up in here, they're just so sick and tired of coming and speaking and feeling that the word is not going to be heard. So, thank you.
Thank you. Speaking in favor, next is Oz Gribel.
Evening, council president, members of the Court of Common Counsel. My name is Oz Gribel, a resident of 21 Temple Street here in Hartford and I'm representing the Metro Hartford Alliance. Pleasure to be back in front of you again and just reiterate a lot of the points we made in our September 17th letter to you, reiterating our support for the proposal subject to the recommendations that we have made to you to include in the resolutions to strengthen the overall concept. We are concerned, as many are, with the recent downgrade by Moody's of the city's debt rating and the implications that has for both the reductions, potential reductions in services and the increase in taxes. This is an issue we've raised with you in the past. Nonetheless, we are highly supportive of the report you got back from the Center for Economic Analysis and the jobs that can come out of this development. So, we remain supportive. We urge you however, to include the recommendations that we made in that letter of September 17th to strengthen this proposal, not just for its own implementation, but for the long term. So, we urge you to include a preamble that commits this council to growing the Grand List over a period of time and reducing the mill rate, which we think is absolutely critical to attracting private sector investment over the long term that's not going to be necessarily dependent upon major state subsidies or major city abatements. We urge you to have this have a resolution and includes the hiring of an appropriate financial advisor to make sure that the city is advised in what could be a very sophisticated negotiation on a public-private partnership. We urge you, and we're delighted the mayor said this in his comments today, on a third point, that there be a strong endorsement of cooperation and integration with the Capital Region Development Authority for all the reasons that the mayor alluded to and that we mentioned in our letter, not the least of which is the long-term needs that we're going to face at the Excel Center. And finally, we urge you and Josh Solomon and the owners of the Rock Hats to again, start the recruitment process or the solicitation process for sponsorships and tickets that will be needed in the 2016 season, so that season gets off to a great start. We also obviously urge some appropriate interaction with the City of New Britain so that this be viewed as a regional operation and not simply for the city. So, in short, we are supportive of this project. We think it brings a lot of potential benefit to the city, but we urge you to include those recommendations to ensure that this project not only stands on its own, but is a harbinger for additional investments down in the future. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you. Speaking in opposition, Terry Outlaw.
Outlaw, O-U-T-L-A-W, Terry, 31 Acton Street. Not in favor, in favor. That's wrong to begin with. There are a lot of people here who are in favor of redevelopment, so this here polarizes people up here. My first item, cost overruns. I will be very surprised if cost overruns don't approach 30 to 50% at minimum. I've been in the construction industry for 35 years in New York, Massachusetts, and Connecticut. There will be cost overruns. I'd like to know who's going to be at the brunt of that. Number two, does the mayor or the city council, or even the governor, have a zero tolerance for crime policy in Connecticut and in particular in Hartford, which is now averaging two homicides as of September 15th and 29th per month? It should be zero. Every mother in Connecticut, every mother in Hartford, and every city across this nation knows that more than zero is too much. The only person I've heard state that they have a zero tolerance for crime policy is the new mayor, Tony Harp in New Haven. She said so on the first day she took office. I haven't heard anybody else Connecticut say that. Last item, got 124,000 residents in Hartford, approximately 45% Puerto Rican, 35% African-American, including Caribbean, and 20% white. How many of the 80% residents, the majority, not the minority, who reside in Hartford will get even half of the proposed jobs? Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking in favor, Mike Zaleski.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Michael Zaleski. I'm the executive director of the Hartford Business Improvement District. We have an office located at 31 Pratchery in downtown Hartford. My organization is a group of taxable property owners in the downtown in Asylum Hill. We represent about 25% of the total real estate property of Hartford's Grand List. I'm here to speak in favor of the resolutions that are before you. For far too many years, the area of Downtown North has sat fallow. Over the years, the city has worked diligently to raise the blighted buildings and consolidate the privately-owned parcels. Now is the time to transform these parcels and realize a higher and better use for the entire city. The Hartford Bid looks forward to this sea of parking lots being transformed by private development that will not only grow the Grand List, but add vibrancy to the city center. The development being proposed by Center Plan and Leland Alliance is ambitious, as it should be for these parcels, which constitute one of the largest tracts of undeveloped land in the Northeast directly adjacent to a commercial downtown. The Hartford Bid believes this plan has the potential to transform Downtown North and connect Downtown as a whole with the neighborhoods to the north and the west. As with any project obviously of this magnitude, it is crucial that the details of the financing agreement are reviewed and all considerations of the deal explored. While it is understood and expected that the city will have to play a financial role in this development, it is imperative that this project not increase city spending and the tax burden on commercial property owners. The Hartford Bid endorses the proposed development plan for Downtown North, being promoted by the mayor, and encourages the city council to adopt all of the resolutions required to move the project forward. In addition, we are hopeful that the city continues to work with the Capital Region Development Authority on this important project, as they are very invested in development in the downtown and the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Bauer, speaking in opposition. Jo, oh, here we are. She's right here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Joanne Bauer from 25 North Beacon. I agree that these signs are a bit polarizing and so I'm standing here in favor of development, but opposed to the stadium. From the very beginning, I saw this proposed stadium as a social justice issue when dozens of parents thronged city hall to demand, fixed the schools first, and scores of documents I read said clearly stadiums do not spark economic benefits. The financial risks, as I've read them, are ridiculously large. I have a document here, it's eight pages, and I have copies for each of you, and so I'm sort of going to skim through this and leave copies with you. I'm asking if high-level cheerleading and political payoff serves us, the residents? John Siegfried's review of Arthur Johnson's 1993 book of case studies concludes, "The real reason there's so much enthusiasm for sports franchises by local government officials is that the acquisition is a sufficiently discreet, highly visible activity affording a political payoff. The costs are spread among a large number of taxpayers over a long period of time, each of whom has too little at stake to invest in opposing stadium proposals." It is surprising though, that this phenomenon carries over to minor league baseball, which has an economic impact equivalent to a large pet shop. Thank goodness in Hartford, there are vocal taxpayers and citizens invested in opposing poorly conceived and rushed proposals. A review of evidence shows that baseball and stadiums do not benefit cities. We have, I've reported on decades of definitive data from Nolan Zimbalist, we have Neil DeMoussen and Joanna Kagan's book, we even have Fred Carstensen, who was hired by council, reporting that stadium, the stadium itself would likely be a bad deal for the city, as will the retail piece. According to Dan Har, by the city's own projections, the stadium deal is set to lose tens of millions of dollars for Hartford. As for the pro forma, I have, I think about two pages of details on the pro forma as I've read them and as others have analyzed for me, but I want to highlight key conclusions from Councilman McDonald's analysis. The proposed project will run operating deficits beginning in year five and continuing until the end of the lease buy agreement with the developers. Also, over the 28-year term of this agreement, Hartford will experience a $73.3 million loss and paying for the project will increase taxes as it makes an already unsustainable city's structural deficits worse and will force taxes up to avoid vital public safety layoffs. Also significant to date, no major business located in or around Hartford, I'm talking about travelers, etna, that crew, has come out in support financially or otherwise for the stadium. Even the Metro Hartford Alliance has expressed only qualified support, noting many of the exact same concerns which residents have yet to, which have yet to be addressed. And I've included Oz Gribel's letter here from 9/17 that he referenced. Many analysts have asked very specific questions about the proposed stadium's upgrade cost to the city. As we all know, for a stadium and baseball field and especially one that's relying on significant revenue from naming rights and advertisement revenue for the Rock Hat owners, there have to be constant improvements to maintain a first-class baseball standard, state-of-the-art facility. As Dan Har reported, economic sources said to him that even a modest amount, say 500,000, set aside per year for capital improvements to the ballpark would bring at least 15 million additional cost to city taxpayers, that's 15 million, not mentioned in the proposal. Then I want to mention environmental costs. Companies were hired to look at the upper and the lower ballpark sites and both companies recommended Phase II environmental studies. There are a whole host, I can read to you.
Right, Jo.
Okay, I understand that I'm near the end, but I want to say that I'm also concerned about environmental justice issues and I have quite a lot of information in paragraph about that. No real jobs for Hartford. Do we really want to create a new neighborhood that polarizes more of our diversity?
Okay.
And so forth. Okay, so here's what it says at the bottom. I need for you each to call me and tell me the answers to my various and comprehensive questions. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Joanne. Next speaking in favor is Josh Reese.
Thank you very much to the council for your time. Josh Reese, R-E-E-S-E, very proud Hartford resident, 105 Gerard Avenue, proud father of three young boys who attend Hartford Public Schools and the executive director and CEO of one of the best children organizations in the nation, Hartford's Camp Current. I can assure you, my thoughts and opinions today are mine and mine only and not from the organization of which I represent. I want to thank the council for your diligence throughout this entire process. I stood here, City Hall, and heard mission accomplished and I was worried, like most residents, that this proposal was being forced down our throats. There were many, many questions. I applaud the mayor and Mr. Deller for coming back during redevelopment, saying mea culpa, it's our fault, we're going to work together as one. Learned a lot of terms throughout this process. Food desert, never heard that one before, super block, and a lot of colorful terms from the crowd in response to all of this. This is what Hartford needs, this is what Hartford wants. I too, every single day, for all of my meetings, walk the City of Hartford. That's North End, South End, West End, Asylum Hill, Clay Arsenal, and all of the above. I talk to my children's parents, I talk to everyone involved. Yes, there are questions, but we needed to have transparency and fiscal responsibility and I think that we've achieved both of those. I've also heard a lot about affordable housing. Throughout these walks, a lot of boarded-up buildings throughout this city, a lot of for rent, office space available. rent, office space available, homes available. We have plenty of affordable housing. We need to work together to address that. This spark, along with the Hooker Brewery, which many have said is a negative, absolutely positive. This is a gentleman who owns a business, who started with one employee, who's now up to 30 employees, and this brewery has the opportunity to do a lot for our city. Not to mention the outreach of special needs jobs to those individuals who might not be able to get a job in the workplace, and a commitment to the community, as we've seen with this past week's incident with the Village for Families and the money that was stolen from his brewery. Thank you for your time today. I understand that there's a major decision ahead that you will dwell on and think very hard on. I urge you to say yes to this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaking in opposition is Richard, and I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. Richard, speaking against, in opposition.
That's probably me.
Okay, what's your last name again?
Rothstein, R-O-T-H-S-T-E-I-N.
Okay, and your address?
I currently live at 54 Carlisle Road in West Hartford. In the process of moving. I am also the treasurer of Watch, a municipal PAC that's been formed to keep an eye on the city of Hartford. That's located on One Linen Place.
Thank you.
Okay. I thought I'd start with a quote. See if you can recognize who said this. "Each city office and department makes professional and fiscally responsible decisions based on data and delivers quality customer service that advances the city's well-being." That was said in an official document of the city by Mayor Segarra back about a year and a half ago. So I'm going to ask three questions. I'm also going to ask two questions, answer two questions that were left over from yesterday's Face the State with Dennis House. I've given you a copy of my comments. I'm not going to follow it directly. Has the evaluation of the proposal been made in a professional manner by the administration and the Court of Common Counsel? Are the decisions to approve the transfers of these properties through lease or sale, lease and sublease of the stadium, fiscally responsible? And three, are the decisions to approve these resolutions based on the data, and will they advance the city's well-being? I have a lot of questions about that. We haven't seen a pro forma in three weeks. The last pro forma, as many people have commented on today and before, had a lot of assumptions that weren't supported. When you adjust for those assumptions, the numbers don't work. The numbers didn't even work with the assumptions that were there. There was no reflection of all of the other costs, the cost of acquiring these properties and assembling it together in the last year, just in recent resolutions, just about $5 million. How is the city recovering that investment? What about the $8 to $10 million of additional infrastructure that has to be made? Much more has to be done. President Woodin, I take you under word, based on what you said on WTIC on the news today, that this will be thoroughly vetted. It hasn't been yet. Now, the answers to the two questions that Dennis House asked Josh Solomon, that he did not answer. One, what happens if the scoreboard has a problem in the first three, four, or five years? Well, once the warranty is over, that's the responsibility of the city, to repair and to replace it, along with a whole list of other items on Exhibit B, read the lease.
Thank you.
The other question is, how much investment do the Rock Cats have in the stadium?
Thank you.
Zero.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Speaking in favor, Lauren. Thank you.
Lauren Vergibedian, living at 5 Bristol Street, Hartford, Connecticut resident. Good evening, Council President Sean Woodin and council members. My name is Lauren Vergibedian, and as a resident of the city of Hartford, I stand before you in support of the development of downtown north and the ballpark. My family has called Hartford home for over 70 years. We take pride in that. Growing up, I spent many years coming downtown with my grandmother to go shopping, to have lunch, to meet with her friends. Once I got older, I would come to Hartford to meet with my friends at her favorite coffee shop on the corner of Trumbull and Pratt. I could have settled anywhere in the country once I graduated college. I chose Hartford. I love this city. It's rich with beautiful cultures, local artists, delicious food, green parks, but with most cities our size, it's missing that something from its landscape. I remember where I was. The moment I heard about the possibility of the Rock Cats coming to Hartford, I actually jumped for joy, immediately imagining a sunny day with my partner and friends, and local hot dogs, and local beer, which always seemed to taste better at a ballpark. The possibility of watching a game from my future living room excites me and encourages me to continue to call Hartford my home. When thinking about the future of this city, I think it is really important to consider the future of this city, the people that will be here in five, 10 years and beyond, and not just the people that work here, the people that live here, too. Call me the eternal optimist, but I truly believe that the development of downtown north, which includes the ballpark, is a pieces-loaded home run for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Speaking in opposition, Steve Calendolo.
I wasn't sure if I was going to make it tonight. I've been in, had a cold and have been in bed for three days, but I'm determined to come to every hearing because I'm determined that you will not wear me down, or the residents of the city of Hartford, because we will not be worn down by these repeated relentless hearings that bring no new information to us, but you force us to come anyways. And I would like to make mention that Laura Vergibedian works for the city of Hartford. And Sean, when it-
Resident of the city of Hartford.
And she had to-
Oh, sir.
Thank you. I just noticed that whenever Rick Rothstein from our group gets up, you always make him mention, you always make him mention that he lives-
Please, most people put their addresses down.
And you always ask him, why didn't you ask her where she lived?
Please.
You asked Rick where he lived.
Because her address is right here on the list, like most people. Please just use your time. Go ahead.
My time would say, the next person that comes up here, ask them where they get their paycheck, because they are not citizens of Hartford. They're getting their paycheck from somebody else.
Thank you. Very enlightening. Jimmy Cosgrove, please. 100 Trumbull Street, Salute. Welcome.
Thanks for having me. My name is Jimmy Cosgrove. I own Salute Restaurant in Hartford. I grew up in Hartford. I've worked in the downtown for over 30 years now, and I've seen so many changes in the city since the late 70s.
Step a little closer to the microphone.
Since the late, since the late 70s to the early 80s. It's just so nice to see some positive energy, some positive things going on in the city. Hopefully, we can continue them. One of the things that we see at the restaurant quite a bit, we deal with a lot of, sorry, we deal with a lot of out-of-town guests who come to the city of Hartford. One of the things they always say, almost to a person, is what a nice city this is, how much potential it has. Well, it's nice to have potential, but it's nice for us to start acting on the potential. You guys are doing awesome. I think the city will bring a tremendous trickle-down effect. I'll give you one example, the skating rink, when that's up during the winter months. You know what it's like to drive into work every day and you see people skating, or you just see a positive effect. It puts you in a better mood. We're going to turn an eyesore into something where people are proud of. I think it's a great idea. Hopefully, you guys go for it, and thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you. Ken Kereski, 6 Atwood Street, Hartford, please.
Good evening, honored members of council. I'm disappointed to see that there isn't a full roster. I know Council Deutsch is around, but I don't see Council Anderson, Council Kennedy, or Council Aponte. It's unfortunate that they've chosen not to join us. I have a couple of comments. I would caution council members who are here to not believe all appearances. I have spoken with members of a fraternity from the University of Connecticut who are here wearing yes badges, because they've told, they've been told, in order to be pledges, they have to come here and show their support for a stadium. Appearances are not what they seem. I'm not making it up. So what I have in front of me right now is called The Myers Report. Robert Myers is a Public Works Evaluation and Implementation Services consultant. You're going to ask what Robert Myers, what does he have to do with the construction of a ballpark? It's about 50 pages worth of systematic analysis of the failures of this administration to properly police the Department of Public Works up until Kevin Burnham and Rhonda Carroll's departure last year. Any administration that allows people to sleep on the job, that doesn't have proper inventory controls for DPW inventory, that has people on the full-time payroll working less than 25 hours a week, that allows managers to manage by intimidation, I'm not making this up, all of these facts are in this report, any administration that allows this to persist cannot, under any circumstances, be trusted to shepherd through a project of this magnitude. This is the same Department of Public Works that's going to be in charge of maintaining a Major League Baseball quality diamond? I don't see it happening. Everywhere we look, this administration gives us the indicia and badges of incompetence. And I want to see the development in the north end. We ask at planning and zoning whether or not this development could happen without a stadium. We all understand that the grand list needs to grow. We all understand that we're in serious financial trouble as a city, but we're hitching our wagon to a deflated star. Minor league baseball is a mature industry. There's nothing new under the sun. I've said this to you guys time and time again. I'm not getting billable hours for being here. I'm simply standing here as a citizen who fears that his taxes are going to go up, who fears that people on fixed incomes are going to be shut out of their houses when their taxes go up because of this chimerical dream. This is a fantasy. This is bad. Anybody who wants a copy of this Myers Report, I'm more than happy to give them a copy. And I, sorry, my printer ran out of ink, so I couldn't distribute one to each of you before this, but the city paid Robert Myers to analyze what happened in the DPW before Rhonda Carroll crossed the double yellow lines and nearly killed a woman. And that kind of intimidation and arrogance has been a hallmark of this administration, and I don't see us building a baseball stadium when this is how we run our other affairs. This is to say nothing of the financial problems with this project, which we've testified about ad nauseam, to say nothing of the fact that Sarah Bronin and the Planning and Zoning Commission gave this proposal a thumbs down. A brewery isn't even allowed in a B1 district. So this is problematic from the get-go. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ken, perhaps you can leave the one copy you have?
If I may approach?
And he's still not getting billable hours. Thank you. Next speaking in favor, Scott Smith of Max Downtown.
Thank you. My name is Scott Smith, and I'm the vice president and partner of the Max Restaurant Group, and thank you for the privilege and honor of addressing you here tonight. The downtown north development and ballpark could be a huge boon to the entire city of Hartford. As a small business, the Max Restaurants welcome having more downtown residents. If we have more customers, we can provide more jobs. The ballpark itself would be helpful to the region. Downtown sporting events bring a vibrancy to Hartford, and we at the Max Restaurants see downtown north and the ballpark as an opportunity that Hartford needs to seize, and we're eager to welcome the Hooker Brewery and new restaurants to downtown Hartford. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking in opposition, Vicki Fennell.
Good afternoon, councilors. Victoria Fennell, 21 Andover Street, Hartford, Connecticut. I'm a longtime resident of Hartford's Blue Hills neighborhood, and I would like to comment on the proposed stadium, also known as Do No Hartford LLC, as presented to the city council recently. Overall, I am not opposed to development, so long as it is done in a responsible manner, meaning inclusiveness with relevancy to the needs, hopes, and desires of all city residents. I'm very concerned about Hartford's finances, which were negatively reflected late last week by the city's bond rating being lowered by Moody's Investor Services. If a city cannot manage its own finances, this is not a good sign, and it could put us at risk in a lot of different areas. I don't want to see our city turn into Detroit because of exorbitant spending habits and an inability to meet our obligations. You know, we all like pretty things, and sometimes we can't afford it. And we shouldn't buy anything on a credit card, because we all know when the credit card's bill comes, you have to have the money on hand to be able to pay it. And so if we use this reasoning with our personal spending habits, we should, it just makes sense to do that at the municipal level. Despite what we hear from our city officials, this is not the time to even consider building a new stadium. Instead, it's time for Hartford to get its fiscal house in order first, and get its- and get its priorities straight. I'd like to briefly share with you about a little story about a town that's located 117 miles from here, similar population size to Hartford, and we, they also have different demographics, but the town is Ramapo, New York. It's located 28 miles northwest of New York City in Rockland County. And they had an experience with building a minor league baseball team stadium, and I think it can serve as a model of how things can go terribly wrong without proper and thorough planning system and analysis. So here are the similarities. The town supervisor of Ramapo wanted a minor league baseball stadium. Promises were made that residents would have no tax burden. Moody's Investor Services cut the town's rating two steps to A1, the fifth highest level, and in 2012, citing considerable exposure to debt to fund the stadium and two years of deficits. In October of 2013, Moody confirmed the grade and assigned a negative outlook. Town finances deteriorated because of spending on stadium costs, putting taxpayers on the hook. Town officials rejected a voter referendum where residents voted no. Ramapo taxpayers are now saddled, settled, saddled, excuse me, with a $60 million tax bill.
Vicki?
Are we done?
Time's up.
Okay, I have copies for each of you. Do I give this to you?
Yeah, you can hand it to Janice. Thank you. Speaking in favor, I believe it's Dean Newkirk, 150 Charter Oak Ave.
How you doing, council? My name is DeAndre Newkirk, lifelong resident of Hartford. I live at 150 Charter Oak Avenue. Went, graduated Weaver High School. I'm currently employed by the IBW, which is on Toy Murphy Road in Hartford, Connecticut. I'm here to say that I believe that the stadium is an excellent idea, is many beliefs of many friends, family, colleagues, and even my children. You know, I grew up on the north end of Hartford on Beaufort Street, you know, real, real poor neighborhood. You know, we had nothing growing up as kids, no real place to go and have a hot dog, see something fun as a baseball game. There's no malls, there's nothing. We got to go to West Hartford for a mall, anything, shopping centers. We believe that this job, this stadium is a great idea. It'd bring jobs to my local. It'd bring jobs for other people who aren't qualified in me to do electrical work, and I think that development is exactly what we need in Hartford. I'm a lifelong resident. I've lived here all my life. I pay taxes in this state, and I'm here to say on my own accord that I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking in opposition, Bernadine Silver.
If you don't mind, sir, I'm going to steal right here.
Yep.
My name is Bernadine Silver. I live at 52 P South Prospect Street. My uncle was born here in 1896. My aunt was born here in 1902, my mother in 1918, and me in 1945. So you know, I have a history here, and also I've been here a long time. I wish there was another aisle, because I'm not opposed to Dono. I was involved with it from the very beginning when they called us to meetings to give our ideas. I am opposed to the stadium, and I'm a- I am opposed to the stadium, and I'm opposed to the stadium, and I'm speaking for myself, let me say that also. Not for any organization I belong to, not for anybody, but for myself in this. I want you to know that somebody thought separating us from our river many years ago with '91 was a great idea. Now, we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars trying to get us back to the river. Also, I want you to know that we had all kinds of beautiful architectural buildings in this city when I was grown too, I'm not just talking about when I was a baby. I got up one morning, went out at 5:30 in the morning to see them blow down the little Edna Building to put up a red barn. That was a good idea. I also want you to know, but somebody's good idea, I don't know who, but somebody had a good idea about that. I want you to also know that there were, and I don't know if they're still working, helicopter ports on some of our buildings, because it was a good idea to come into Hartford, make your money, but never step foot on the ground. That was a good idea. Look at Constitution Plaza, which concurrently exists. That was also a wonderful idea, never touching the ground, just being up above. And it might still be a good idea if you could do something with it, but right now is a very sad place to be, and the city has to support it with having their offices there. I also want you to know that good ideas come from people, so I'm very grateful that you're having this hearing, and I hope you have many more before you make your decisions. But one, one thing I want you to know, that when you're gone and your grandkids know who you are, and everybody else that look in the history book know who you are, and there's a big empty building sitting there in the middle of our downtown, they will know that you had something to do with it. And that's the reason why I'm scared about that stadium. I also want you to know that I've been serving on a committee for years, representing the city of Hartford, for a year or so, representing the city of Hartford with Feniman Road, Madison Park area with Farmington. I've been begging them for over a year to speak to New Britain. How are we gonna speak to New Britain now? What are we doing now? I just want you to know that I'm concerned, and I want all of you to please look at the things in this city that were supposed to be good ideas, but they were follies.
Thank you. Glenn Barron, speaking. Glenn Barron?
Yes.
81 Rockledge Drive.
Good evening, council. Glenn Barron, 81 Rockledge in West Hartford. I'm your American Legion baseball coach here in Hartford. We're sponsored by the McKinney King, Post 142 on 2121 Main Street here in Hartford. As your American Legion baseball coach, I'm bringing a different type of perspective to the podium right now. Mine is amateur baseball. I came to Hartford four years ago, and when I arrived, the amateur baseball in Hartford was in shambles. The division I coached at, in the American Legion level especially, there's 100 teams in Connecticut to play, Hartford was number 100 when I arrived. I'm four years into a transformation that has taken Hartford this year to make the state tournament here in Connecticut for the first time in 72 years. 1942 was the last time they participated. It's been a sizable achievement, but still a lot more to go. Having a stadium here in Hartford could bring amateur-level baseball to the next step and beyond. As we know, baseball's failing in our cities across America. It's not in Hartford. I arrived four years ago, started a transformation process with the older kids, age 15 to 19. There's a strong group with the Mayor Mike's folks that are working with the younger children, participation is up, ability is growing, and success is documented. So, bringing a stadium to Hartford gives us the opportunity to include greater participation in the youth levels, just osmosis, having the stadium will attract them to be playing younger, as well as hosting regional and national-level quality events at all the divisions of baseball that are played across Connecticut and this region. So, council, I appreciate you letting me present to you today, and I'm a strong yes for the project.
Thank you. Next speaking in opposition, Wildalise Bermudas.
All right. Hi, good evening.
Evening.
My name is Wildalise Bermudas, Wildalise Bermudas. I live at 6 Atwood Street, and I'm gonna speak a little bit in Spanish and English, because I do recognize that a lot of times we forget that there are many people in the city who also want to watch and be part of this process, but they're excluded sometimes because of language barriers. So, I am not in favor. Our city's most valuable resource is our land. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted against the development of this valuable land to be used in this way for a reason. When you, city council, vote on this, you are voting on something that will affect us for decades. So, let's take a look at the main points, and I have three to share with you. This project is running on deficits, beginning in year five until completion, the lease-buy agreement with developers. Two, paying for this project will increase taxes. Why? Taxes will go up to avoid public safety and layoffs. Three, over the 28-year term of this agreement, Hartford will experience a $73.3 million loss. I don't know if we can pick our end of the panel. Este projecto tiene un deficit comenzando con el año número cinco hasta la comple, hasta que se complete y se termine el proyecto. Pagar por este proyecto va a aumentar nuestros taxes. Aumentar. Por qué? Porque van a tratar de evadir los leav. Durante los 28 términos de año de este proyecto, Hartford va a tener un déficit de 73.3 miles, millones de dólares. I'm all about jobs and economic development. You're all about jobs and economic development. We want that in this city. That's what we are craving for. We're not, we're not saying no to jobs, we're saying yes to jobs. That's, that's what I stand for, and that's what I represent. In fact, that's what I'm doing for a living. I'm all about jobs, but let's be clear with the exact number of jobs this will create. Fred Carson said the project would create more than 1,600 jobs in the Hartford County. Let's say that again. Fred Carson said that would create 1,600 jobs in the Hartford County. But that's the Hartford County, that's not the city of Hartford.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Speaking in favor, Jermaine Lee. 100 Laurel Street. Welcome.
Good evening, council, president, Pastor Cruz. It's a pleasure for me to stand before you as a pastor within the city, as an advocate for change within the city, but also as a local 40-sheet metalworker. Disregard the sign, I am very much in favor for the stadium coming on the North End of Hartford. For one, I would ask that you would enter into a project labor agreement. Utilize the workers within this state. We have very qualified union workers that would bring potentially 30% residents, an opportunity to not only have a job building a stadium, but a career, learning a trade. I've been entered into this opportunity. It's been a blessing to my life, my family, and I'm very sure that several of the other people who are suffering from the violent crimes and the lack of resources here in the city of Hartford will be able to utilize a pension, a career, some great health insurance, benefits that they never would have had the opportunity to see. Also, as you develop this, I ask that you would consider not only developing an athletic theater for sporting events, but utilize some of the midget league teams and bring them into a great experience with professionals so that they can have aspirations to reach higher than the stars, reach further than their block, reach outside of the parameters of their neighborhoods and the damage that they suffer every day from the crime and violence. Give the people on the North End a grocery store so that they don't have to go to the West End or the South End or far away from their homes in order to shop and get the daily resources that they need. If you're truly going to develop the North End of Hartford, develop it more than just this stadium, develop it for the entire community. Make this a benefit. Don't get into this agreement because you choose to build a nice, pretty stadium and start employing people from New York State, from Rhode Island, from Massachusetts. Bring it into the city and let it be employed by those members in the city and in the state. That way, it will be an economic benefit. That way, if the taxes increase, you've employed enough people so that they can cover the taxes that have been increased and share the burden. We are all in this together. If you truly want change to come to this city, bring money to the pockets of the citizens of this city.
Thank you. Speaking against, Ann Goshdiggian.
I had to check that. Good evening, Ann Goshdiggian, 80 Weathersfield Avenue in Hartford. You know, the mayor said something interesting here tonight. He said if we don't do this development, he said, "Picture us a year from now, wondering what went wrong." Well, I wanna say, "Picture us five years from now, if we do do the development, wondering what went wrong." You know, this city has been, started as a trickle, bleeding money. It turned into a flow, and I fear that it is turning into a hemorrhaging of money that we can ill afford in these times and the way things are in the financial sector of the city right now. Prior to the June 4th announcement of the, I'm sorry, I gotta say it again, done deal, lot of money had been spent during secret negotiations on stadium consultants, architects, engineers, and lawyers, to the tune of about a quarter of a million dollars. We found out just last week that another almost half million dollars had been spent through the Department of Development for J C J to do renderings of a proposed municipal office building, which I believe has been off the table, maybe on the table, off the table again. So, anyway, it's almost a half a million dollars for a building that may never even happen. Now, some people are used to talking in numbers that large. I'm an average person. To me, a half a million dollars, that represents maybe 20 years of work, and probably to a lot of other people in this room too. And I don't like to see my city doing speculative things like that with money when there are so many other pressing needs in Hartford that have been neglected. And I just wanna read a brief statement. I wanna read a brief statement from a letter that I wrote to a councilperson today. "I am encouraging the city council to please consider all the facts and figures you've been presented with regarding the Downtown North Development proposal very carefully before it comes to a vote. As the proposal now stands, there is still a glaring lack of transparency, and the numbers in every revision of the pro forma have varied. There is no real and solid consensus that this will be good for the city of Hartford. And as we now know, the baseball component of the stadium will not help Hartford financially or socially. It will only add to the city's economic woes while enriching the team owner's family and perhaps the developers. The development of that area is vital, but there hasn't been enough time spent to put together a real plan for success. The stadium, with the rushed timeline that the administration has thrust upon you and us, is a recipe for disaster. We have to ask ourselves, why is the mayor pushing so hard for the stadium component? The developers will build what the city requests, and they will build it on our timeline, not the baseball team owner's timeline."
Ann? Thank you. The time's up.
The clock, the clock is varied on every person in here. I saw people speaking for four and five minutes, Sean. You need a new clock.
Okay, thank you. Speaking in favor, Ed Riley.
President Wooden, council members. My name's Ed Riley. I'm president of Greater Hartford New Britain Building Trades Council and business manager of Ironworkers Local Union Number 15, which has been housed here in Hartford for 112 years. We're at 2028 Sergeant Street in Hartford. We are, as a building trades council, in support of this development, conditionally. We're in support of the development, but we wanna make sure that this project is developed under the terms and conditions of a project labor agreement. If the city of Hartford is gonna put time, resources, money, transfer property, and do all that, well then the citizens of the city of Hartford need to benefit by that. I think we need a strong, strong residency requirement for the city of Hartford. I think we need minority participation from the city of Hartford, minority business enterprise, small business enterprise, disadvantaged business enterprise, and I think we need a veterans hiring program known as helmets to hard hats. I think that we need to do career days in the high schools with the building trades and the jobs funnel, so we can let the high school students know that the city of Hartford is working for them and that there is opportunity. I don't wanna simply see a small goal met where a young man or a woman goes to the project, works for a couple of months, and then is gone. I wanna see new careers, new opportunity in the city of Hartford. I wanna see young men and women go on to careers of 30 and 40 years and have pensions, have health coverage, have journeyman upgrading programs. We can change the next generation with this generation. The opportunity is presented to us. And again, on behalf of the Hartford Building Trades Council, we would look to work hand in hand with the city of Hartford on economic development and a job creation program. If we're all part of, the spoke of the wheel of progress, if we all play a role, we can change the city of Hartford now, and as I said, into the next generation, but we all have to step up and do it. It is the city's property, let's make sure it's a project labor agreement, let's not just build with bricks and mortar, but let's build young minds and young hearts and opportunity, and let's build an economy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, speaking in opposition, Hyacinth Yenney.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As you may see, I have my baseball shirt on, and I love baseball. So, as I'm here to say, I love Hartford, and I live in Hartford for 37 years. So, no one can say that I'm just here because I just wanna say something. I live in the neighborhood, I've been active in my neighborhood, I'm hearing what my resident in the neighborhood's saying, and so, but I'm speaking right tonight for myself. We, the people, elect you guys to be our leaders, and we are expecting you to listen to the people that elects you, okay? Because we trust you to do the right thing. You know, a couple of years ago, we did a One City, One Plan, and we had lots of people from the city of Hartford input in that. And at the end of the project, everyone felt great about it, because they had an input. This project was a done deal, the resident didn't have an input in it to say whether it was a good idea or a bad idea. Now, everyone is here thinking, it may be good and it may be bad. We always say to our leaders, let us be a part of the ground up, not the ground down, okay? Leaders get into trouble all the time, because they don't listen to their followers, all right? So, I'm here to say that as our leader, we expect you to do- So, I'm here to say that as our leader, we expect you to do the right thing because Hartford is a place, when we make a plan, it's a plan for the future, for the centuries that comes along, way beyond us, and we should not make decisions that based on today, but based on what's going to happen in the future. Because we've seen a lot of what's happening in Hartford, and we wonder, where were the people input? And because there were no people input. So, I'm just going to be saying, please, make the right decision. Jobs, 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 right? Well, look at M D C. Jobs, jobs, we are all going to get in Hartford. Little do you know that nobody tells us that it's a state bond, so the money or the jobs is not going all to Hartford residents. So, why don't we make this baseball and the development a regional thing so everyone can feel good about it, instead of just talking about building a baseball field, which is not all that? Because we have the Excel Center that sits there as an ice hockey rink. Our children doesn't have the opportunity to go there unless there's something special, okay? So, this baseball thing can happen, but it has to happen because the people wants it. Thank you.
Thank you, Hyacinth. Speaking in favor, Phil Nick.
Good evening, Mr. President, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. It's time. It's time to take advantage of this remarkable opportunity. And now, when she asked the questions, what went wrong? What will be wrong if we don't do anything? If we don't do anything, we do nothing, we have failed our children, we have failed our community, we have failed our citizens over the city. And we heard Cynthia asked a question. We heard the New Britain people answer the question. There is no tax burden on the citizens, on the residents of Hartford. Therefore, why lose the opportunity to this tremendous advantage that we have given to us? By the way, I don't live in Weathers...I live in Weathersfield now, but for those who know me, I lived on Magnolia Street when I came here from New York. My kids went to Vine Street School. I'm a mentor of Vine Street. I taught 35 years in the Capital Community College. I graduated from college two years ago. I taught five years at Cracked. I taught five years in Montessori. Hartford has a place in my heart, and I have a right to be here to talk in their interest. So, what I'm saying to you tonight, let's go, baby. Let's go, and let's get going, and I'll buy two tickets for the game.
All right. Oz would be happy to hear that. Next, speaking in opposition, Lily Holliday, perhaps? Lily?
Ms. Holliday, she asked me to speak on her behalf.
You've already spoken, sir.
I've already spoken, but she wrote something, just wanted to say. My friend is Ms. Hyacinth, and she said something that caught my attention. We expect our city leaders to do the right thing. On behalf of Ms. Holliday, I must say that we don't expect our city leaders to do the right thing, and that's why our people are here today screaming to make sure that you do. You would ask that we would trust you. Here's why we probably shouldn't. The P card scandal, thousands lost. The snowplow scandal, 250,000 lost. The treasury insurance scandal, 700,000 lost. The Aponte scandal, 500,000 lost, and the list goes on.
Next, speaking in favor, Mike Stotts.
Hi, Mike had to leave, but I'm reading this letter on his behalf.
Thank you.
He's the managing director at the Hartford Stage. Dear council members, I am writing to express my support for the downtown north development. For far too long, this prime parcel of land that sits at the gateway to downtown Hartford has been a most unwelcoming doormat. Within the central downtown footprint are many architecturally significant buildings, a beautiful park and riverfront, and some of America's most treasured cultural facilities, including the Wazworth Athenaeum, the Bushnell Center for the Performing Arts, and of course, Hartford Stage. The vacant downtown north lot speaks volumes to passersby, and indeed, many do just pass without coming in. Developing those lots into a vibrant community with retail, restaurants, sports activity, and residential can only enhance the city's entrance and create more activity throughout the entire downtown area. We all know that Hartford lacks a vibrancy and energy that is common to strong and exciting urban communities. On occasion, we get a small taste of it when the Excel Center, Hartford Stage, the Bushnell Park, and the riverfront have large audiences, and especially when events happen concurrently. I am all for more activity that will help to create and sustain that energy. If the downtown north project does not get approved, it may take years before another plan is proposed. Quite frankly, Hartford can't wait. We are currently experiencing a renaissance with numerous apartment conversions, major renovations, and upgrades at all of the cultural facilities, and with several components of the I-quilt plan now being realized. Should we not ride this momentum and get downtown north development done? Respectfully submitted, Michael Stotts.
Thank you. Next, speaking in opposition, Alyssa Peterson.
Good evening, council, Alyssa Peterson. Hot off the press, Standard and Poor's has downgraded the city. That's two rating agencies that have now downgraded the city, and thank you to Mr. Brookman for bringing that forward. Standard and Poor's cites that the significant budget gaps in its long-term projection are the reason for this downgrade, and the city's diminished flexibility following a sizable general fund drawdown projected for fiscal 2014, the second ratings agency to downgrade us. Currently, we have a $43 million budget deficit for next year. A vote for the leases and transfers of property would be fiscally irresponsible and show a stunning lack of support for the city's existing unionized workforce, public safety, public works, and administrative personnel. Rather than listening to the few trades unions coming forth in support of temporary stadium construction jobs, where is the council on budgeting to save permanent and future union jobs in the city of Hartford? How many more police budgets will be slashed or recruit classes eliminated? How many firehouses could ultimately close? Or more crews be cuted attempt...more public works crews be cut? Public safety, public works, and public health jobs are essential to any city attempting to function in a civilized manner. Tax collection, asset management, maintaining official records, elections, building permits, these are all bare bones jobs. Preservation of these jobs are what city council members should be fighting for, as well as keeping healthcare costs in check for existing and former Hartford union members who can no longer afford skyrocketing insurance costs and still have a living wage on which to retire. If council passes these leases and the proposal, please be aware that legal action is planned. A civil lawsuit will allow us taxpayers the time necessary to discover what financial or expert information council members have relied on, what's going on behind the scene with HUD dollars, what planning and zoning recommendation was ignored. There's a list of things that we will be discovering in a legal action such as this. List pendants will be following, which will delay the transfers of the land and leases. This is all very possible. Very honestly, the financial markets have spoken, and I don't think you can afford to ignore it. We beg you to put this plan aside and turn over the redevelopment of north downtown to the Capital Region Development Authority, the Hartford Redevelopment Authority, and the Parking Authority. A combination of the three is a viable and workable plan. The stadium proposal as proposed is not workable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ray Haley, 178 Rogers Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've lived in Hartford all of my life. Worked in Hartford, paid my taxes in Hartford. I'm in favor of this project because I believe Hartford just needs that one spark to get it moving forward. That's all I really have to say. Just it's got a...this is a great idea. I think it's a spark that Hartford needs to get it going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaking in opposition, Rosemary Cardwell, 227 Oxford Street.
My name is Rosemary Cardwell, and I live on Oxford Street in Hartford. Andrew Zimbalist, professor of economics at Smith College, who has studied stadium financing, said, "To get taxpayers' support, politicians too often make promises that don't come to fruition, leaving localities to cover debt payments and maintenance costs that sap funds that could be spent on parks, schools, and police. If taxpayers are supporting a stadium because they believe it'll help their city socially and culturally, then fine," said Mr. Zimbalist. "If they're doing it because they've been sold a bill of goods that it'll boost their economy, then no, it is not a good expenditure of funds." Hartford, the second poorest city for its size in our nation, needs something. That's a whole other subject. But it is not, in my opinion, a baseball stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking in favor, Marty Alvaranga, Local 43, Carpenter's.
Thank you, councilman, Mr. President. Again, I want to thank you for having the audacity of thinking outside the box and allowing a developer to come in here with private equity and develop a project of this magnitude. For 30 years, I've been driving by this vicinity. I've owned property in Hartford, and I represent over 110 families that live in this city, and many of them own property and pay taxes and vote in this city. It's a good project. Everyone says the devil's in the detail, and that is true. But overall, this project will create opportunities for residents, non-residents. It'll be a magnet. It'll bring people into the city. When I was a young man, I built a lot of bridges on High Street and Street, the connector for 91, so people can leave out of the city when they get done working as quickly as possible. It's about time that we keep people in this city after they get done working. It's about time that we offer them something more than just a dinner, and then they can go home. This project has the possibilities of expanding on residency, of expanding on people living and staying in this city, and that's what we need to look at. We need to have a broad picture and have the conviction of taking chances. I represent a lot of folks here that pay taxes, including ourselves. So, we understand that there is a risk, but without risk, there is no reward. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking in opposition, Val Bryan, 180 Beacon Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, everybody, for being here and for giving me and some of us multiple opportunities to speak. I don't have a lot new to say, but I just keep thinking about, what would I do if I was in your place? I would look at this stadium situation very, very carefully. I would peel back the layers of all of the assumptions, get more information. You asked for more information from the consultant who did the economic impact study. I don't know whether he's given you additional information. You need to look at that, and also all of the revenue and expense assumptions, and ask Councilman McDonald how he came up with his pro formas. That looks horrendous. If I was in your seat, and you're in the hot seat, I could not vote in favor of a proposal that has negatives, numbers, deficits, and negative cash flow. So, this isn't really about a stadium, a glitzy idea, fond memories of going to baseball games, thinking about taking kids to baseball games. It's about the numbers. Do they work or not? I don't think they work. So, what can you do? Go back to the table and negotiate a better deal. If you are buying your first house, and maybe some of you have gone on to buy other houses, you're very careful. You don't want to buy something that's too expensive, that has repairs that need to be made, that are beyond what you could afford, or that you don't even know about. So, go back and look at this deal. There are shaky assumptions. There are too many risks for the city in terms of the revenues and in terms of the responsibilities that the city would undertake. So, please, be very cautious, and don't make a decision that's going to cause harm to the residents and taxpayers of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking in favor, Tim Sullivan, Carpenter's.
Thank you, councilpeople, for giving us the opportunity to weigh in on this. My name is Tim Sullivan. I'm a representative of the New England Regional Council of Carpenter's, 2 North Plains Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut. We're here in favor of responsible development tonight. I personally know, and I've had the pleasure of talking with Perfecto, about the community benefits and Hartford hires program that we certainly would anticipate be a part of this project. As councilmembers, we're counting on...the entire community is counting on your actions to get people the opportunity, not the handout, just the chance. As Martin alluded to, learn a skill and support a family. We're going to have that opportunity with this project, and we're going to be able to use a private developer's money to get it. It's a win-win for the city of Hartford. An unused space that has been a blight, an eyesore for so long, can now become the gateway to the north side of the city and an economic multiplier that will activate an area of the city that needs it. I can't stress enough how responsible this developer has been in the city of New Haven. Some of you are aware, we have been able to use New Haven hires and New Haven residents. I have a number of these folks that have gone on to work in Waterbury, Hartford, Enfield, New London, all over the state. They have learned to fish, and that is what we're bringing here. We want young people, every type, to have that opportunity, to have that chance. We have a deplorable rate of unemployment in our cities throughout the state, and we can impact that positively here. The members we brought tonight are here because they have jobs. The people that aren't here tonight are the folks that need jobs and will have jobs, and this is a critical element in this project. I counsel you to work as hard as you can, develop a fair and firm approach to a community benefits agreement, demand that this project be built responsibly, and have something the city of Hartford and future generations can look at, enjoy, and talk about. I helped build that when I was a kid, and that's where I started. Thank you so much for your time, and thanks for letting us speak.
Thank you. Speaking in opposition, Jim Raffino, 269 Dudley Town Road.
Hi, there's...thank you for letting me speak. I reside in Windsor, but I grew up in Hartford, 50 Williams Street. I lived on Laurel Street, and I graduated in 1960 from Hartford High. Hartford has a strong place in my heart. And although I reside in Windsor, I'm a taxpayer, state taxpayer, and I know the city of Hartford gets a lot of its revenues from the state. So, here's my comments. I'm not for or against this project, but we only have two podiums, for or against. You might consider having a podium that says, "Questions or comments?" And here's what I would...why I came tonight. I implore the council to do its due diligence... I implore the council to do its due diligence and do what is best for the city of Hartford and the state of Connecticut, not what's best for the developer. Your obligation is to do the best deal you can do if you decide to proceed with this project. Mr., Chair, was it President? Your President told me that the council has hired a consulting firm. I think it behoves, and I don't know if this is planned or not planned, but when you get the results of your consultant, it was paid for with taxpayer dollars, that should be shared with the public. That way, the public, whether for or against, knows the recommendation of this consulting firm. It helps them enforce their position, whether it's for or against. So my other question is this. The Rockettes left New Britain. What if the Rockettes, for whatever reason, determined they have the legal right to leave the city of Hartford? What do you have in place if that contingency happens? This has to be, because we know in the sports world, not all teams exist forever. I was a Whaler season ticket holder. They're no longer here. So when you deliberate, think of all the pros and cons. Definitely, they're a minority here tonight, but I would behove you to listen to the people that were against, and if you decide to proceed, incorporate as many of their concerns so that they will feel part of the process. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next speaking in favor, Pete Mercado, Los Amigos League.
Good evening. I didn't know how to speak, but thank God I'm here to speak on behalf of, I'm very supporter of my league. Once again, this is like my third time I talk. We're here to stay, and hopefully, everybody will go with us. These meetings, I believe if you do it a little bit later, I just left work to come here, but if we do this meeting a little bit later, we get more people, and people get to say whatever they have to say. I'm a supporter of having a baseball field. My league, I have twenty teams. I wish I could bring everybody here. They can't because there's not enough room. But, once again, taxes, I always pay taxes, and I hope this comes through, and we'll have a baseball field here so I can go and spend my money here in Connecticut, here in Hartford. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. And next is Carmen Rodriguez. Carmen?
She's back here. Good evening, Mr. President, gentlemen and ladies of the council of Hartford. When I came and put my name to speak tonight, I've said before that I'm neither for or against. And the President said that he didn't have a page that fitted my request, that there was no page that said, "Thinking about it." Undecided, but not undecided. I sat here when I came, and I look at this population here, and it's a very interesting population, I think. And it's one that will fight hard for what happened with our mayor, whatever, this decided by this group and our mayor. And that's what I wanted to talk about, why we chose you. At least, I very strongly chose you because you were community people, you were people who care, smart people, and that was going to take Hartford and work to better it with your mayor, not the council here and the mayor there. I also have watched each and every one of you grow as councilpeople, and that's nice to see, you know? So what I'm going to ask, I'm going to support, what the lady that had the white hair and the gentleman that spoke one or two minutes ago, to say, "Let's do the best we can. Look at all the loopholes." That's your job, and that's the mayor's job. And I'm sure, I have known that mayor's, that gentleman, since he was about eighteen or nineteen, and I know he's a good man, and I know he wants the best, just like I know it about you. So can I ask that you make it a point to work with the mayor, honestly and earnestly, to find the best plan for Hartford, Connecticut? That's simple. I think it should be simple. So I see Ken Kennedy, and he says, as always, I know you love Hartford, and I know each and every one of you love Hartford. And these people here, whatever moved them, love Hartford. So that's all I'm going to say. I ask that you look for the best plan.
Thank you, Carmen. And I'll just, next, I'll call up Evelyn Schreiber, speaking in favor. But I will note, just because it's been commented on, you can come on up, it's been commented on several times, our council rules actually, they have this set up when we have a formal public hearing, calling for speaking in favor, speaking against, speaking in favor, and so that's why it's set up like that. But your points tonight are well taken, and that there are probably a lot of people and a lot of subjects in this city that just want to speak on it, and not in favor and against. So I think that's something that we should consider as a council. The other thing I will note, so we have at least one person supports that idea. Thank you. Next, we will move on to Evelyn Schreiber, speaking in favor.
Hello, my name is Evelyn Schreiber.
Schreiber, okay.
I am residing in Cromwell. I'm a part of the Local Fifteen out of Hartford, and we definitely do need this labor agreement. I am in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, so the list in opposition, I've called everyone on that list, so I'd like to just ask, is there anyone that hasn't spoken that would like to speak in opposition at this time? Kevin Brokman.
Good evening. I think most of you could probably recite our speeches now from all these public hearings on this, and I haven't seen people wavering too much in their opinions, even with the information being put out. I doubt there's anybody in this building or in this room that's opposed to baseball in Hartford, or even opposed to a stadium. But when I see the numbers that this potentially could cost us upwards of four or five million dollars a year, I would ask all the people from the suburbs, would you mind sending us a check for seventy or eighty mils on your car, which is what we pay? And those are rates that are most likely going to go up more, depending on the debt service and the impact on the city. We can't afford more taxes. You know, there's nobody in this city that's just thrilled about seeing the mill rate go up every year. We can't afford it. People are being forced out of their homes because they can't afford it. And when we get this, the release today, when I checked my, I wasn't even going to come to this meeting because I figured that the deals, as the mayor said, it's a done deal. Our voices aren't going to make much of a difference. So I wasn't even going to come down until I checked my email at five o'clock and saw the email from Standard and Poor's, that Hartford, Connecticut outlook revised to negative on reduced flexibility. How can we even think about spending money like this? If you could go back to the owners of the Rockettes, or find somebody else that's going to step up and say, "We'll foot the bill for that." Be my guest. Go for it, and let them share the risk on this. We can't always have this stuff on the back of the Hartford taxpayers. We can't afford it. You're killing this city. And what's the, what's the percentage, and I know you can't sit here and give a number, but what's the percentage that this program is going to work? That we're going to see all the retail, we're going to see the office space? We've got so much vacant office space in this city now. We've got the XL Center, we've got most of Pratt Street, most of downtown, and even Park Street now has a lot of empty retail, or places that have gone out of business. They can't afford being here. So how are we going to all of a sudden build this whole project, three hundred and fifty million dollars, and it's going to work, when other much smaller projects haven't worked in Hartford? So what do you think the percentage is, that we're going to see this whole project come together and be a benefit to the city? We know it's not a hundred percent because you can't sit here and promise us that. Is it thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent? And I know some of you are parents here. Would you ever send your child to a school that promises a thirty percent, or forty percent, or even fifty percent graduation rate? No. So let's look at this as if you were sending your children somewhere, as the way you're going to make a decision for us, the people of Hartford. We elected you to put you up there to determine what's best for us. Now we're asking you to do that. This is a terrible project. You need to look at it and say, "This doesn't make sense. We've got to find a different way to do this." Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking in favor, John Livingston.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm the business agent for the Sprickler Fitters, and I represent everybody in Connecticut and Rhode Island. I was born and raised in Hartford, and I'm lobbying for your support of the PLA. I know it's been talked about before, but seeing you're building a ball field, and you're talking about investing into the community and into the people of Hartford, I think instead of hiring residents for a job, you can hire residents for careers, and they can continue working in different unions and in the trades after this project, and they can continue to give back to the city, be homeowners, taxpayers, and I'm in support of the PLA and this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone to speak in opposition that has not spoken yet?
I sent a letter to the mayor and to the council concerning this project shortly after it was announced, and I've not been the most involved with following up what's happened. The context of my letter began with, "Are the people who own the Minnesota Twins stupid?" And I think they're not. They're probably pretty good businessmen. And the first thing they did when this project came out, as I read, was to disassociate themselves with the Rockettes. So that was a problem. I read the newspaper article on the developers, and they're very impressive people. You should know that when I sat up there as corp counsel, I spent a lot of time learning about twelve B and all of those parking lots over there. I happen to park in one of them now because the mighty have fallen. I'm not allowed to park underneath the library anymore. So I pay five bucks a day, and all that parking is going to be lost. I don't know what's going to happen to all the people who parked there. Where are they going? But, you know, what the heck. Should there be development there? The last time an administration in this city looked at a prospective developer for Lot Twelve B, they got taken on a ride by a very sophisticated, as it turns out, actually racist group, who decided to build their little television station in a town other than Hartford after taking Hartford on a ride. And I don't have to tell the people who read the newspapers in Connecticut that the state got taken on a ride by the Patriots owner. We can't afford any more rides. I've lived in this city since nineteen, I came to Hartford in nineteen sixty-eight. I was the first black lawyer in a law firm in the history of the state of Connecticut when I joined Ribbikoff and Kotkin in this town. I've lived in the house I live in on North Beacon Street since nineteen eighty-eight. I raised my kids here. I believe in this city. I believe in development. I believe in opportunity. I listen to people talk about being concerned about whether there is law in Hartford that protects minorities. I drafted that legislation. I know it's here. If it's not being implemented, shame on us. But anyway, I'm a firm believer in development. I believe that this city ought to be developed and become the great and wonderful place it has long had the opportunity to be. But I worked for some of the finest developers in this state. I worked for Alan Utensky, who was probably one of the smartest people I've ever seen in development. But let me tell you, if you don't take care of the developer, he will take care of you. They're smarter, and I, we used to have a saying when you did commercial development, "The developer never had two nickels to rub together. He had your money to rub together." Let's not have that. Let's not have that. I'm going to watch the project really closely. I'm sure that some people behind me are shocked that I would be on their side of this, of any issue.
Thank you, John.
Here we are.
Thank you, John. Speaking in favor, Lynn Chester.
Evening, councilmembers. I thank you for the honor to stand before you. I'm the business rep for Local Seven Seven Seven, the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union. I just would like to inform you that, like, Seven 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 Main Street, I have thirty members of Hartford residents. Some of them come in through the Job Funnels Program. Some of them just came in as journeymen. With this project going forth, the objective is to gather more Hartford residents and bring them into our program and educate them so that they can go on, have careers, and flourish in the city of Hartford. I'm strongly in favor of this project and strongly in favor of a project labor agreement, and I want to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Next, speaking in favor, Victor Delaire.
Good evening. My name is Victor Delaire, and I've lived in Hartford for the last forty years, and I'd like to see the project built. And when it's built, I'd like to see it built with a project labor agreement. And I'm a member of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local Seven Seven Seven. My children were born here, raised here, went to school here, and I love the city, and I'd like to see the project built. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking in opposition, speaking in opposition, speaking in opposition, next to speak in
Good evening, honorable members of the council, President Woodin. My name is Fernando Vedenkord, Executive Director of the San Juan Center, Inc., a nonprofit organization that has been providing services, social and economic development services, in the Clay Arsenal and, in fact, the entire city of Hartford since nineteen fifty-seven. I'm a resident of the city at Six Park Terrace. We rise in support of the concept of development of the area known as Downtown North. We believe that the status quo is not an alternative for an area that has been neglected over the last three decades. While we do not have knowledge in detail of every specific development being proposed, we can infer that the concentration of all proposed projects, such as a brewery, restaurants, and a supermarket, the baseball stadium, and particularly the new housing units, will create much-needed job opportunities to hundreds and can act as a catalyst for further development in the area. In fact, the San Juan Center has begun work towards the rehab of our headquarters building located on twelve eighty-three Main Street. This work will bring the historical building to life at a cost estimated at nine hundred thousand dollars. We have communicated and informed the city administration of our efforts and our desire to be considered a partner in all phases of the Donau transformation. In addition to bringing online eight two-bedroom apartments and commercial and office space in the first floor, the San Juan Center is well positioned, due to the proximity, actually, in front of our building, of all the development being proposed, and the kind of services we provide, such as our employment and training program to become a real partner, mobilizing our community in this process. our community in this process. And if you invite me, I can make this presentation in Spanish to show the support of the Latino community of this project. We urge you to take into consideration certain important principles that, in our opinion, and from our perspective, are indispensable to a future success. They are: The financing of all projects should not be a burden to the city taxpayers. Any increase in taxes to the common citizen residing in our city will imperil the competitive potential of Hartford in attracting more people to move in. Second, careful planning should protect existing common spaces that are currently used for recreation, open spaces, particularly for our youth. Third, every effort should be made through new or existing legislation to guarantee that the immense majority of jobs be offered to city residents, particularly those living in the area targeted for development. And last, moving forward, transparency and effective communication with the community is not only desired but needed. And last, Mr. President, for many members, this is about democracy, a conversation. People speaking against or in favor have valuable points. For us, it's not a theory. We serve the people here every day in that same neighborhood. So we encourage you to support this development.
Thank you very much. And can you, can you share a copy of your...
Absolutely.
You picked off a number of points.
Absolutely.
I'd like to have a copy. Thank you. Next, Raquel Calderon? Raquel, I know... Oh, here we go.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here again to speak in favor of the project. I have heard all nine many things, and I kind of go along with Carmen. I think the city council should really think about working with the mayor, not against the mayor. That's what I understood she said, and I really go for that. You know, I'm so proud that we have a mayor that is really thinking in the future to do something to resuscitate the ghost town of Hartford. Hartford is a dead, dead town. Look at West Hartford. I also own a property in West Hartford. Look at West Hartford. The Blue Square was not there, it was dead. Nobody was going over there. Right now, you go over there, I go over there, I consume. I spend my money over there, and I see a lot of people from the north end of Hartford over there sitting down because it's beautiful. This is what we need to do for Hartford. We should not be negative. We should say, you know, this is gonna work. Yes. Talk to the developers, get the better price, you know, and, but, and I talk with the community in Hartford more than anybody else. I knock doors. They are all for it. And I'm also Vice President of the Union for the substitute teachers, and I talk to children. They do want the stadium here in Hartford. So yes, let's think positive, and let's support the mayor, and please, city council, make sure that you make the right decision because Hartford is dead. We need something of this project that's exciting. I can't wait until it's done. I live, I live in here since I was 12 years old. I live here little more than 50 years, like, more than anybody, and I wasn't born in here. So let's not talk about not giving an opportunity to races or color. You know what? The minority people here is a different thing right now. So I don't like when it comes to racism and colors. Yes, let's, you know, stick to the point, what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Louise Kynell? Yes. Please don't engage. We're doing our best here, okay? Anna? Dionne Fairfield Avenue? Oh, Sierra. Oh, I'm sorry, Anna. Hi, Anna.
Good evening. Honorable President Sean Woodin, the members of the Court of Common Counsel, the general public, I'm just here to say that I'm greatly in support of what's taking place in the north of Hartford, whether it be the stadium or anything else that comes in there. I think this is a new beginning for Hartford. We have the convention center down the street. We have capital community. I understand that UConn is coming in into the city too. We talk about keeping our young people in the city and providing a possibility or a way for them to stay here and grow here and have their families. Well, I think this will contribute greatly towards that. I think we're doing somewhat of injustice to some of the citizens of Hartford that I think ought to be here to speak, whether they're against or for this project. And I want to thank you, the young man that was here earlier, and he talked about living in the north end of Hartford. He never had a stadium to go to or participate in activity like that, and he saw it as a benefit. Well, I think when we talk about that the people of Hartford don't want this, I think we're just restricting the people of Hartford from talking and saying whether they do or they don't. And I agree with Raquel. I think we really need to reach out to the young parents. We need to reach out to the youth and find out from them, is this is something that they want, not just a group of people coming in here and saying, "No, this is not good for Hartford." Who are we to say it's not good for Hartford? The Rushmore Stadium was supposed to come in here. We said, "No, it's over there in East Hartford." The casino was coming in here. We said, "No, it's over there in North Stonington." I think that you need to look at the Giant Stadium, you need to look at the Red Sox Stadium, and you need to look at the Rushmore Field and find out, how do they do it? Are they making a profit? I'm pretty sure they are. If not, they would not be in existence. As far as providing for jobs, I just came back from Puerto Rico in the Dominican Republic, and I spoke to a lot of the families down there, a lot of the people that work in the resorts, that work at Walmart, that work, I was surprised going to Puerto Rico, Wendy's, McDonald's, and whatnot. And they dress with pride. They carry themselves with a lot of pride. They may not be making a lot of money, but they're supporting their families. They're not getting a handout. They're able to provide for their kids to go to school. And the kids are going to, they're having, you know, they're, they're, they're working to be able to continue going to school and providing for themselves and providing for their tuition. So I don't think who we are to come here and say, "No, this is not for Hartford." We need to go to the people of Hartford that don't have anything right now. The young people coming out of the schools during the summer, they have nowhere to go. They have no jobs. They are the ones that should be saying, "Yes or no, we want this or not." So I think that we need to have a public hearing and make it known to the general public in Hartford of this public hearing and have them come and voice their concerns too. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Kirkley-Bay, former councilwoman Kirkley-Bay, welcome, and former state representative.
Good evening to all of you. I want to say shame on this whole council, because I asked four or five questions at the last meeting, and not one of you or your aides has tried to explain to me any of the things I asked. And I have given 30 years of service to this city, and I think that's a shame. I still think you should be doing a project labor agreement. Number, I want to know, if there are three major events in Hartford, one at the Xfinity Theater, one at the baseball field, and one at Constitution Plaza, how do you get the traffic out of Hartford? Has anyone looked at the patterns for moving traffic like that out of Hartford if there's major events going on at the same time? And the other question I have is, will this have adverse effect on the people at Mary Shepherd Place in North End Gateway? They're right in the hub of where you're gonna be building all this stuff. Will they start getting calls for too much noise pollution? And my fourth, third question is, why is Allen Taylor sitting there? He's not on the council, and he's not corporation counsel.
Thank you. Next, Rosa Morales, speaking in favor.
Hi, guys. Listen, I don't care. You do whatever is best for the city. You listen to me? Stop talking over there.
I listen to you every week, so please continue.
Whatever is better for the city, as long as they don't mess up the city, they don't throw papers on the floor, and they keep the city clean, I'm happy with them. So I pray and I ask the Lord to help you to make the right decision. Have a blessed night.
Thank you. Erin Batia.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm a lifelong resident of Hartford, Connecticut. I'm also a proud member of the Ironworkers Local 15, and I'm in favor of this project for the project labor agreement, with the project labor agreement. Not only has it benefited me and my family, but friends, residents, Hartford residents, relatives, and my fellow brothers and sisters in the union. I appreciate you guys giving me this chance to speak, and you guys have a nice night. Thank you.
...throughout the ages, have seen where development have been proposed, and have also seen where opposition came. If you know Scripture as good as me, there's a name for such a thing. There were two guys. One was called Sanballat and another, Tobia. They opposed. But I'm saying, nothing wrong with opposition. But when we look at the future of our city, I wonder why we should oppose such an awesome proposal. And I said it's awesome because 13 years ago, when I decided to move from Jamaica to Hartford, Connecticut, I was not so privileged as I am now to the internet, so I had to go to World Book Encyclopedia, and it was 1972 edition. And it speaks, or it spoke well of such a city. And I came here with excitement that I'm going to have a good job to raise my family. When I came here, it was total different from what was told to me in World Book. It took me one year, two months, and 19 days to get a job. I was very frustrated. And I'm saying, a project like this, developing our city, $350 million, I don't see why there should be any Sanballat or any Tobia who will oppose that. I'm saying to you, city council, I trust your judgment. Developer, I got up yesterday morning, I was a little late for church because I was watching Face the State. I am one who stay into you, and I'm saying to you, I'm one who really get nervous when time is running out. But I'm saying to you, let's get it going. There are a lot of young people in this community. Point of privilege, Mr. Speaker, can I get you more minutes? Another minute?
I'm sorry.
30 seconds?
I'm sorry.
We're wasting that time, but let's get the work going. Do your best. I am for it. I support it, the union for it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Rick Bena? Rick?
Hi, my name is Rick Bena. I live with my family, well, we reside at Eight Park Terrace. We're neighbors with Fernando here. Just happy to see him. And he's in support also of this stadium. I'm a Carpenter's Local Union 43 member for 16 years, and I've been in Hartford 21 years now. We transplanted here, I transplanted here myself. I have my kids here at the local hospitals, and they've gone through the school system, and they're currently going. And with the great schools that we just built, you know, and through the Carpenter's also and all the other tradesmen and tradewomen, and there's a lot of opportunity that I've seen guys come in as apprentices. And I actually was apprentice at one time too, not long ago. And I've seen them come up through the ranks, and now we're working in Farmington at the UConn Health Facility. Some of these guys are journeyman. They're traveling and, because they got skills and trades. And so I think it's a great opportunity, I think. And I do reside also on the Hartford Hires Task Force, which we've seen a lot of different aspects of this project and heard from different resources and sources, and kind of got a good view on things. And we're here to, we're charged with the opportunity to try to bring Hartford residents work and to see the projects be monitored correctly. And I would charge you, charge, you know, council and the developers and everyone else, even the Hartford residents, to, you know, watch this project closely, and hopefully it goes forward. And this is a great opportunity to, you know, inject some life, more life into Hartford. Hartford isn't dead. It's just maybe, you know, lingering a little bit, you know. Especially with the school system, you know, I hear a lot from my kids, you know, about the school system, and it's great. It's working. But I think this project will help get us over the top, will get us a lot further than we are. And so I just would recommend that this thing be set in place, be monitored, and that you do diligence, be diligent on this job. I think this is an opportunity that we shouldn't squander. And I think the iron is hot, so hopefully we can strike and get this project done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Derek? Where? Derek?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Sorry for being late, first of all. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm very much in favor of a stadium coming. I look at it like this. I don't have any speech prepared or anything, but I look at it like this. This could be Hartford's field of dreams. If we build it, they will come. That's how I look at it. And I have a small, I have a, I don't mean event, but I just mean event. I have a small gripe with the unions. My name is Derek. I'm a plumber's apprentice, and I can't get into a union until next year, and these things are going. So I want to speak in behalf of the people that's non-union. We want to be part of this too. You know, don't make it just a union thing. And I see a lot of these... I have my card right here, right here. And I want to be involved in this too. So don't just make it a union thing. Put it 50% union, 50% non-union, and give us the same amount of wages, or about the same amount of wages, that the union people are getting. And I rest my case with that.
Thank you. Excuse me. You want to come forward?
How are you? My name is Ayana Saunders. I was born and raised in Hartford. I love my city. I grew up on the north end and also grew up on the south end. Now, I was raised under a Hartford that was an entrepreneurial city. The small business owners built this city. They ran this city from the south end to the north end. And I am so disappointed that you are allowing outsiders to come in and take away our opportunities. I am now a small business owner, and I'm unable to obtain a property on Albany Avenue because they want to give it to bigger businesses to build what they want. I'm from this city. I know what my people need. I know what my people want. My people are dying, my Hispanic people, my black people, my Jamaican people are dying from the foods that we were raised on, that we were forced to eat. Now I want to put in a vegan restaurant and give them more culture, and give them more satisfaction in what they take in their bodies. And I'm not able to do that for my people because outsiders want to put a store in there, an outsider who doesn't even know what my people want, or what my people need. This is my child right here. I had a principal in Ross, and his name was Mr. Duval. He told me, "Ayana, you could do anything you want to do, from Hartford to Hollywood, but you never forget where you come from." This is where I come from. This is where I want my son to see me strive and succeed. I want my son to see what the old Hartford was, how I grew up. I know that people, people had upbringings, and they were poor, and they were destitute, and I understand that. Fortunately, my family came from Jamaica. My grandmother worked, and she made $2 an hour when she first came here. And she worked her way up, and I saw that. And it was single women that raised me, and I'm raising him as a single mother. And I don't want my son out in the street, and I don't care if my son likes to play basketball. We have underdeveloped and under-financed youth facilities... We have underdeveloped and under-financed youth, um, facilities. We're not paying attention to what really matters. If you think that if he comes in with a bad grade in math, that I'm taking him to that baseball game, you have another thing coming. If it's ten dollars, you won't be getting it from Ayana. Because I'm going to spend that money on making sure that my son is not beat up by police officers and not thrown into jails. You understand what I'm saying to you? I want my business on Albany Avenue. And I feel that it's unfair that I cannot obtain my business where I come from. This is my city. My mother, my grandmother, my aunt, my uncles, my whole family built this city.
Can you tell us the address that you're referring to?
Two ninety-two Albany Avenue. And I also want to obtain Nine Center Street for the parking.
Okay, thanks.
We have a menu and I'm so grateful because, you know, if this works out, then you guys get free food.
No, 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 you can't. No, you can't. Thank you. Thank you. Ayana Sanders. Yeah, Saunders, I believe. Uh, so that concludes, that concludes resolutions, uh, items one, two, and three on the agenda. We have two more items. And it's this is not so the next item, uh, we will invite individuals to speak on is a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a lease agreement with Jose Ramos doing business as Hartford Headliners Barber Shop LLC for use of a retail space located at two eighty-eight Albany Avenue. Anyone speaking in favor?
Eddie Hagemack, one seventy Sisson Avenue. I'm all in favor of this because the person wants to move and wants to, uh, build this barber shop there. I, I, I'm for it. I'm for this, well, number one. I, I'm for this number one very much. Thank you. To, uh, at least, uh, yeah, it says, yeah, I'm for it.
Thank you, Eddie. Anyone speaking against? Anyone speaking against? Anyone speaking against? Anyone speaking, speaking against the barber shop? Are you, are you speaking against the barber shop or in favor?
Um, no, uh, for favor, uh, I, I need, I need, I need a bus stop away, way, way back. So, so how, how, so how long do you get back, back, can you, the, till we, we build a bus stop and we between up, up there or where, where there? I, I don't know, I, I don't know, the, where, where that bus stop? Where, 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 where the, the bus stop shelter is?
All right.
I mean, I mean, I really don't know. So, what, what, what are we going to do?
I, I understand.
Yeah.
Uh, this is regarding, uh, the need for bus stops and the bus shelters.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone, anyone to speak in favor of this item regarding Headliners Barber Shop? Kelly Kirkley Bay.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Kirkley Bay. I'm standing here on behalf of the Clay Arsenal NRZ. Um, just letting you know that we do support this project. They did come before, um, NRZ. They gave us the information we needed. And we're going to continue to work with Development Services to, uh, move the project along.
Thank you. Anyone here speaking against this item? Anyone speaking against? Anyone speaking against? Anyone speaking in favor? Anyone speaking in favor? Anyone speaking in favor? It's no, no, if you got to ask the question, we're, we're moving on. Sorry. All right, this item is closed. Uh, next item, number five, resolution authorizing the city to enter into a lease agreement with ten, doing business as Linda Nail Salon for retail space and property located at two eighty-four Albany Avenue. Anyone speaking in favor?
Eddie Hagemack again. I'm, I'm for number two also because I read that thing already. And I'm for the businesses down there to either open, whatever. I, I forgot. If, I, I, I forgot what you just said, but I'm for it because I'm, I'm more, I'm for retail anyway, Sean Woodin. I'm for more retail. If it's going to move there or, or expanding, whatever, I would, I would appreciate more retail coming to this neighborhood, Albany Avenue, anyway. So I am supporting Albany Avenue and their efforts to move this business. Not less, but more. Thank you. On one seventy Sisson Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone speaking against? Anyone speaking against? Anyone speaking against? Anyone speaking in favor? Anyone speaking in favor? Anyone speaking in favor? This item is closed. We are adjourned. Thank you.